My name is Dan Carney and it is, once again, my privilege to act as chairman of this meeting of the Board of Trustees. A regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Weatherford College, being held today, Thursday, August 7, 2025, at 1:30 PM in the Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon a posted agenda. I'm very pleased to see that we have in attendance and deliberation with us again here today, Dr. Robert Marlet, Mr. G.B. Bailey, Leela Morris, our president, our vice chair, Mr. Doug Dowd, Mary Beth Denny, and Dr. Trev Dixon. Thank you all for attending here today. I call this meeting to order and I call upon Mr. Brent Wetter once again to keep him to provide us with an indication.
I would love to, sir.
Thank you.
Please bow with me. Lord, we thank you for our board, our students, and our employees. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
For the third time.
For the record, that's his third indication. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Worley, has anyone signed up to address us publicly today? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it much. Third item on the agenda is the President's Report, Dr. Todd Allen Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. Congratulations to Weatherford College trustee Tom Vick for being admitted to the 2025 State Bar of Texas Family Law Section Hall of Legends Award. This is a prestigious lifetime achievement award. Mr. Vick is not able to join us today, but when you see him next time, please join me in congratulating him on this very prestigious award.
On his behalf, thank you very much, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you to all of our students, faculty, staff, and community members who recently volunteered to assist the flood victims in central Texas. You collectively lived our core values of faith, hope, and love. In addition to helping those in need, you modeled service to our students and to our community. Grant Mills and several volunteers will be presenting details of our service trip during the September board meeting. The Weatherford College Foundation has experienced a year-to-date giving increase of 40.5%. Additionally, a new WC Patrons of Arts Society has recently been launched. Our generous donors are positively impacting the lives of more students than ever before. Weatherford College recently named head volleyball coach Kylie May as the new Assistant Director of Athletics. Additionally, Judd Kinsey has been named head baseball coach. Kinsey has been WC's assistant baseball coach since 2018, serving as the program's pitching coach and recruiting coordinator. He is also a WC alumnus. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contracted employees who have resigned since the last board meeting. Dave Frederick, a welding instructor, has retired effective 7/17/25, and Suni Cannon, a workforce health professions trainer, has resigned effective 7/25/25. We thank Dave and Suni for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment update. As of July 29, we had 6,097 students registered for the fall 2025 semester, compared with 4,589 students registered on the same date last year. That is a year-to-date student enrollment increase of 32.8% over our record-high enrollment last fall. These astounding growth numbers do not include all of our non-credit workforce and continuing education students, which will be reported later this fall. With heavy registration ongoing in August, we will undoubtedly continue to be the fastest-growing college in North Texas and beyond. Mr. Chair, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Farmer. Item number four on the posted agenda is the consent agenda in financial reports, items A through F, as has been posted previously, including approval of minutes, financial reports, TASB policy update, women's cross-country, TIPS cooperative contract on master's transportation for a new bus, and disposal of obsolete and surplus items. Is there any comment, question, or any other matter on any of those items that any board member cares to bring up? Anything whatsoever? That having been said, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda as has been posted?
Approved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That all appears to be unanimous, so approved. Item number five is consideration and possible action for determination of prevailing wage on construction projects for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Dr. Cantrell.
As this states, as we are required by the Texas Government Code to once each year or once we're into new projects and all that to adopt a resolution of prevailing wage rate determination for the fiscal year and for the coming fiscal year 25, 26, we're recommending at this time that the Board of Trustees approve the Texas Government Code Section 2258.0022 subsection as its option in determining the general prevailing wage rate as presented. This is stated in here, this is something we do every year. It's just a requirement that is by the Texas Government Code.
Does any trustee have a question or comment about that? Then do I have a motion that the Board of Trustees approve Texas Government Code Section 2258.022A subsection 2 as its option in determining the general prevailing wage rate of per diem wages as presented? Do I have such a motion? Dr. Marlet, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mary Beth. All in favor, would you please raise your hand? That appears to be unanimous and so approved. Item number seven, consideration and possible action on proposal of 2025 ad valorem tax rate and scheduling of a public tax hearing. Dr. Cantrell.
Uh...
I did, I'm sorry.
I think we missed...
I did skip six. That's Miss Stoner. Forgive me, let's do that one. Consideration, possible action, 2025, 2026 board meeting dates. How could I miss that?
Okay, good afternoon. I'd like to note the two highlighted dates on paper in front of me. Those two are Thursdays, that are Thursdays other than the quarters, the usual second Thursday of the month. And then after consideration, we're asking to move the February board date from February 12 to February 5, which is the first Thursday of the month, to accommodate scheduling. Thank you.
Okay. Are we missing the August 21 date on here?
August 2?
I think that would be in this year.
Yeah, we...
That would be in this year.
This is for the coming 25, 26.
August 21 is for this fiscal year, this is for the next fiscal year.
It says 2025.
2025, 26 fiscal year. So the 2025 fiscal year begins, 25, 26 fiscal year begins September 1, 2025.
So the recommendation and I call for a motion, if there is one, that the Board of Trustees approve those dates as are presented here for the updated, recommended, regular meeting dates and times for the 2025, 2026 fiscal year. Do I have such a motion?
I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. So approved. And now, Dr. Cantrell. I was so anxious to get to you.
Much of this I did discuss in the budget workshop, but we'll go back and I may repeat myself in some of this.
That'll be fine.
The 2,025 appraisal roll for the Weatherford College was certified at $30,637,431,665 on July the 22nd by Troy Hanson, the chief appraiser for the Parker County Appraisal District. This calculation represents a 10.23% or $2,844,284,082 over the 24 certified values. Attached you will find in your packet the calculation worksheet, which is very lengthy and very boring to do, but we, this was the first year we were, the college was required to do this on their own. The appraisal district had done it in the past, but things have changed now. And, but they did review it and approved it after the fact. So when we're looking at this calculation worksheet, it produces a no-new-revenue tax rate, previously called the effective tax rate, which might be more easy for you to remember. And it is .101436, and the voter approval, the VA tax rate, previously called the rollback tax rate, is .110234. The 2024 tax rate was .106087. The administration recommends at this time remaining at the same rate for the coming year to meet the 25, 26 budget. The .106087 tax rate is above the NNR rate, but under the VA tax rate, meeting all requirements of advertising. A balanced budget has been developed, which totals $99,223,253, and the total rate required will be .106087. This equates to a 4.585 increase above the NNR rate and is sufficient to fund our coming year budget. As required by law, it's necessary for the board at this time to propose a tax rate sufficient to fund the 2025 budget. A proposal rate above the 2025 NNR tax rate will require you all to vote on the proposed tax rate and set a time for one public hearing before a timely tax rate can be adopted. The administration, as I said, is proposing the public hearing to be scheduled for Thursday, August 21, 2025, at 12:30 PM and vote to approve the proposed tax rate to be scheduled and immediately following the hearing on Thursday, August 21. In summary, once again, at the August 7 board meeting, you must act to propose this rate at this time and set that meeting.
So same tax rate as last year?
Yes.
Any comments or questions thus far before I call for a motion? Hearing done, do I have a motion that the Board of Trustees propose to adopt 2025 ad valorem tax rate of 0.106087 on August 21, 2025, and confirm the tax hearing date and time of August 21, 2025 at 12:30 PM in the Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building of Weatherford College located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, and immediately following the tax hearing to vote to approve the 2025, 26 budget and 2025 proposed tax rate? Do I have such a motion? And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify, raise your hand. Thank you very much. And Dr. Marlet, as always, will abstain as our Wise County representative.
And all this is posted on our website, if you all would like to go back and review at any time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cantrell. I think that brings us down to Agenda Item Number Eight from Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, you've been provided with your Weatherford College Wise County report as well as academic and student services update. Earlier in the summer, you were provided presentations about the success of our athletic programs as well as our arts programs. Today, I'm very pleased to be providing you with a presentation of all of our academic awards and academic achievements, which are very vast. And so at this time, I would invite Dr. Ido Yaga to present that presentation.
Thank you, and good afternoon. So, you know, of course, I've got honor of following our athletic director, who is award-winning. And so congratulations to Judd. But I wanted to share with you all some of the new technology that we are actually incorporating into the classroom here. And so with this presentation, we'll be looking back at everything that we have accomplished this last year. And so you'll be hearing this from the lens of one of my favorite artificial intelligence students, Taylor Rodriguez. And so she's ideal. She's got a 4.0, she's Phi Theta Kappa, and is one of our new high steppers. And so with that, Larry, if you want to go ahead and play the presentation of her, please.
Or Chair Carney.
I have it on backup PowerPoint cases went terribly wrong.
Chair Carney, trustees, and President Farmer. Dr. Ido Yaga, Executive Vice President of Academic Services, is honored to present and share this academic services look back for this past year. This area supports 182 full-time faculty, 371 adjunct faculty, 48 full-time staff and administrators, and 48 other part-time staff or retirees for a total of 650 employees. As you are aware, this past year, we had the largest academic program expansion in the history of Weatherford College. Academic Services launched one bachelor's program, eight associate degrees, and three certificates this past year. This brings Weatherford College to a total of five bachelor's degrees, 44 associate degrees with 19 concentrations for transfer, and 46 workforce certificates or institutional awards. University transfer partnerships are essential to the success of Weatherford College students. With more than 13 articulation agreements established over this past year, our deans, department chairs, and program directors are hard at work developing more transfer and reverse articulation opportunities for Weatherford College. As an institution of higher education, we begin with the end in mind. Weatherford College has achieved a 20% growth in graduation rates this past year with 1,852 students graduating. We expect for this number to continue to increase with our expanding enrollments. Dr. Alex E. Bay leads our Emerging Technology and Workforce Division in collaboration with five program directors. Many students in the workforce programs complete certificates that are stacked into our associate degrees of applied sciences. These programs have an overall average pass rate of 96% for certifications, licenses, or registries this past year. Success of our programs can only happen through our outstanding faculty. Congratulations to Samantha Grimsley as the Emergency Medical Services Educator of the Year, Dr. Bill Alexander for his Texas Workforce Commission Award for Empowering Excellence, Dr. Michael Saylor for his presentations and published work, and Dean E. Bay for leading the way for Weatherford College to become the most promising places to work in community colleges for 2025. The Health and Human Services Division is under the leadership of Dean Boswell with 12 program directors with workforce experience in their areas of specialty. With licensure and certification pass rates averaging 92% in these high-demand, competitive-entry, health sciences programs, faculty engage with advisory committees and industry partners to provide essential healthcare workers of the future. Congratulations to Nursing and Respiratory Care for achieving a 100% pass rate. For recognitions in this area, Ms. Suzie Jerry received the Outstanding Professional Award. Ms. Nanamaniyovis accepted the Excellence Award from the Texas Association for Clinical Lab Sciences. This speaks to their excellence in teaching as they move into retirement next year. Dr. Stephen Dorrin was published and elected to the Editorial Review Board. Ms. Crystal Brenner received the Bill Bitzel Award, and Ms. Tessa Gray was elected to the Finance Committee for the Sonography Association, to name a few recognitions. The Fine and Performing Arts Division is led by Dean Durritt. Each year, the division curates exhibits to showcase local artists, and performing arts is an exemplar across our community from the International Piano Competition to our jazz ensembles and music performances. Our award-winning faculty engage students in plays, events, and music year-round in free productions. Thank you to all of our faculty for the creative ways in which you give back to WC. The accolades are also numerous within the Fine and Performing Arts Division with Dean Durritt leading the way, receiving a Legends of Jazz Award to pop up art shows in downtown Fort Worth or Dr. Song's nomination for the Piper Award. Mr. Rick Reeney's 24th season of the Dallas Opera is also a wonderful contribution to our students. We are fortunate to have such outstanding talent at the college. Thank you for sharing your gifts to our college, students, and community. Our academic division with seven department chairs focuses on transfer, general education, and honors programming. The honors societies at Weatherford College include the National Society of Leadership and Success, Phi Theta Kappa, and the honors program led by faculty across Weatherford College, and an international honors society is coming soon. Thank you to our faculty for your leadership in professional development and student engagement. Once again, in the Division of Academics, faculty seek opportunities to engage in professional development, publish journals or books, and continuously improve programs through accreditation or assessment best practices. From a professional development standpoint, faculty across the departments continuously present on topics to enhance the student learning environment and pedagogy within their disciplines. These moments are also celebrated in the promotion and rank process at Weatherford College. As you can see, the faculty recognitions have been numerous over the past year. We are also blessed to have an amazing leadership team. Our academic leaders have a collective 145 years of experience. We want to give a special thanks to Dean Durritt for his 50 years of service, Dean Boswell for 45 years of service, and Dr. E. Bay for 23 years of service. Thank you to our leaders. Also, at the helm of academic leadership is our team of department chairs. Thank you all for your move to a 40-hour work week to support students, faculty, programs, and our community year-round in onboarding more than 22 new full-time faculty this year. For this upcoming academic year, congratulations to our new group of associate professors. We are so fortunate to have you all on our academic team. With the implementation of promotion and rank this past year, we want to recognize and celebrate these faculty promoted to associate professor based on student learning and success, service to the college, and scholarship. Congratulations to our associate professors leading the way in 2024 to 2025. We value your service to the college. Each year, we have a celebration of students in the spring. Faculty celebrated 80 students for their outstanding persistence, initiative, grades, or other student successes. We also celebrated 14 penning ceremonies and inductions to Phi Theta Kappa and National Society for Leadership Honors programs. These celebrations remind us of the importance of our work and the lives we change on a daily basis. Thank you to our faculty for modeling the way regarding student success, honors, and recognitions. We could not do what we do without our professional staff. Dana, Tammy, and Debbie were recognized this past year by President Farmer, faculty, and administrators across the college. We are fortunate to have these outstanding administrative professionals at Weatherford College. Thank you for all that you do. For other areas of academic services, thank you to Stephanie Fields and Dr. E. Bay for your work with Texas Workforce Commission and Perkins with more than $2 million in grants. Dr. Jones deployed watermark and data systems. The library, under Ms. Valerie Starr, had more than 48,000 visits this year, and Dr. Dana Byrd was instrumental in deploying professional development year round via the committee. Last, the college also received the four-year designation this year through the coordinating board. From the first day of class to graduation, we thank our faculty and staff in academic services. At the end of the day, it is all about our students. Thank you for the opportunity to share this look back of academic services this past year.
Interesting.
It is.
So our new artificial intelligence program, this is some of the technology that we're training our students in order to design, program, and build. And so it's been a lot of fun in learning the new tech. But more importantly, when President Farmer asked that I give a presentation on academics in five minutes, I said, "Really?" For this past year, we've had just amazing work across the divisions. And I could see Leela smiling when they were talking about the certification rates. The fact that our students are receiving 90 to 100% certification pass rates is just simply outstanding. And so I just want to reiterate how wonderful our faculty are. They give back every day. And I just want to thank you all for the support that you give to us as well. We couldn't do this work without you. So any questions on that presentation? Yes, sir.
Is this report available online?
It can be. So I'll hand it over to marketing for that part.
Yes, sir. We will, we will post it online.
Is there a secret code?
I think the best place would be on our news page, maybe?
Can I attach it with the...
With this, that's, yes. On our news page.
On what? What did you say?
On our news page, if you look at our pages, the news. Yes, sir.
If you have a question, sir.
Thank you.
The number of faculty was...
182 full-time faculty and another 371 adjunct faculty. And so, yes, sir. And that's a normal ratio when you're looking at serving the students. And so we have a really nice balance between full-time faculty and adjuncts. And we have been expanding our adjunct faculty significantly this last two months because of the enrollment increases. Anything else?
Thank you, Dr. Ido Yaga.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. I believe we're down to Agenda Item Number Nine on future Agenda Items or meetings. Once again, Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Future Agenda Items, on August 21, 2025, we will have a called board meeting for the public tax hearing and adoption of the 2025, 26 budget and ad valorem tax rate. That meeting will occur at 12:30 PM here in the Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Doc. Item Number 10 is Announcements. Mr. Baker, if you're not too tired...
I'd be happy to.
Can you have a prayer before we go?
Pray if you want. You can never pray too much, right?
I hope we feel very blessed today.
Why would you start and pray when you close?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. President Farmer mentioned Kylie May, our volleyball coach. Well, our three-time conference champion volleyball team is back at it again. There are six volleyball matches, home volleyball matches, between now and our next board meeting. Their first home volleyball match would be August the 21st. They actually start conference play in September, so it is upon us. First day of classes, August the 25th. I think Dr. Y may have mentioned that. Board members, we have our W.C. Foundation Scholarship Donor Appreciation Dinner, and typically, this has been in November. We've decided to move that to September. So, you should have each received an invitation to that. If you did not, please see me. We would love to have you there. It's usually a pretty special night. And we have already fine arts events coming up. There's a piano duo concert on September the 9th, and there's a jazz faculty ensemble August the 26th. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much, as always. Down to Item Number 11, where we will retire and close session at 1:58 p.m. on real property and personal matters. We are in recess.
By my timepiece, it's now 2:47 PM, August 7, 2025. This is a continuation of our regular meeting. We're now down to item number 12, Consideration Possible Action. Real property. There are no action items under item number 12. Item number 13, Consideration Possible Action. Employment Evaluation Reassignment Duties Disciplined Dismissal, Public Officer or Employee. There are no action items on that. Item number 14, Adfirmment. Do I have a motion?
I saw the motion.
And so, I got handled. All in favor? It is unanimous. We are adjourned.